Councilmember Nguyen? Here. Mayor Pro Tem Rosen?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. We'll have the invocation by Les Jones, the Assistant City Manager, and the pledge of allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Rosen.
Dear Lord, please be with us as we gather this evening. Purify our intentions, strengthen our purpose, and grant that in serving our fine community, we might also serve you. Amen.
Please join me in reciting. Les Jones, you make them this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is proud to present two community spotlights recognizing committed servants to our community. We begin with the Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year, Bernie Sells and Betty Redd. Bernie and Betty, would you please come forward to the podium? Over 20 years ago, Bernie Sells, along with his wife Mary, made his mark in Garden Grove by aiding a young homeless woman and her child, offering them food, shelter, and a bus ticket home to her parents in Oklahoma. It was this display of selfless compassion that would lead to Thomas House Temporary Shelter, a first of its kind in Garden Grove. Noticing the lack of homeless shelters, he identified a need to provide a caring and nurturing environment, including food, clothing, and housing for destitute families. Bernie became a champion for the homeless by planting the needed seed. Today, that seed has flourished into a two-story building complex with 18 apartments, providing living accommodations, counseling, job placement services, after-school care, and homework help that has served over 800 families since 1987. Bernie's love for mankind motivates him to continue serving the needy, the poor, and the homeless. His example of determination and spirit rightfully earned him the Chamber Man of the Year Award. This year's Chamber Woman of the Year is Betty Redd, who was nominated by the Assistance League of Garden Grove. Betty is known for her infectious cheerful demeanor and readiness to assist others. For the last 15 years since her retirement, she has served the community in a myriad of ways. Although much of her time has been devoted to the Garden Grove Assistance League, where she has held a variety of board and committee positions, Betty has also been a 10-year member of the Women's Division of the Chamber and a volunteer for the Garden Grove Police Department, Garden Grove Hospital, Strawberry Festival, and Friends of the Foundation. She has also served as a Blue Ribbon Committee Member for the city's 50th anniversary. Prior to her service to the community, she fulfilled her voluntary obligations as a Boy Scout den mother, PTA president, treasurer, and board member, as well as chaperone for school dancers. She unselfishly gives of her time and expertise and is a motivator in volunteerism. Now, at this time, the mayor and the city council would like to present Bernie Sells and Betty Redd, each with a certificate of recognition and a small gift for being named the 2008 Chamber Man and Woman of the Year. Garden Grove thanks you for your commitment to the service and betterment of your community. Thank you, congratulations.
It's really a humbling experience to receive an award when other people do a lot of the work. Why don't you go over and get a mic, Bernie? So everybody, yeah, so people at home can hear you too. Yes, Betty, you're next.
I'm really getting this award because of all the volunteers and of the staff and my wife that have helped put this shelter together. And it's really an honor to accept this award. The other people have really earned it. But I'd like to thank the city of Garden Grove for recognizing me and for also the interest that it has in assisting the homeless and the assistance you've given to the shelter in the past. And appreciate it very much. Thank you.
For somebody who's never wordless, it's hard to say everything that's in my heart. But I want to thank everybody for doing everything that they do because I know it's from your heart and my heart too. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Next, the 2008 Senior Volunteer Man and Woman of the Year, would Paul Blackwell and Patricia Breeze please come forward? Both Paul Blackwell and Patricia Breeze were selected from a list of exceptional candidates. The Senior Man and Woman of the Year honor is an acknowledgement of each of their uncountable hours of charitable work with their respective nominating agencies. As is the tradition, the Senior Man and Woman of the Year are crowned as the Strawberry Ball King and Queen. This year's King and Senior Man of the Year, Paul Blackwell, was nominated by the H. Louis Lake Senior Center, where he has served as a volunteer driver for the Meals on Wheels program since 2001. Prior to serving the senior community, he served his country for over 20 years as part of the United States Navy. An incident in which he was thrown from a carrier by a roar of jet fighters landing, then rescued by helicopter, was coincidentally filmed and continues to be shown in all safety training classes. As a loving father of three girls, his volunteer calling began when he's stationed in Guam and he volunteered to be his daughter's Girl Scout troop leader. His compassion for his youngest daughter's illness compelled him to donate blood platelets for cancer patients. For the last 18 years, Paul has made monthly visits to Chalk Hospital to undergo the most, almost three-hour process. Paul's commitment to his family is carried over to the community. His sincere dedication makes him an outstanding, worthy citizen of the Senior Volunteer Man of the Year Award. The 2008 Strawberry Ball Queen and Senior Woman of the Year was nominated by the Women's Civic Club of Garden Grove. Patricia Breeze, better known as Tricia, has lived in her childhood Garden Grove home since she was nine years old. The Garden Grove High School graduate married her childhood sweetheart and raised two sons. She worked in her family business, Breeze Quality Meats, a fixture in Garden Grove for the past 50 years. Now retired, Tricia is engaged in a variety of service clubs, including the Stanton Chamber of Commerce Women's Division, the Stantonites, and the Women's Civic Club, where she has chaired various fundraising projects, including an annual scholarship program for her alma mater. She is devoted to projects for youth and seniors in the community. Tricia is especially supportive of the Teen Challenge Program aimed at helping youth fight drug and alcohol addiction. Her passion for helping others has awarded her the title of Senior Woman of the Year. Now, at this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Paul and Patricia, each with a certificate of recognition and a small gift for being named Senior Volunteer Man and Woman of the Year. Both possess the experience, selflessness, and time greatly benefiting each organization and cause. Garden Grove honors you as exceptional volunteers considered invaluable to our community. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm a loss for words. On the carrier thing, I wish that would get out of my repertoire, but I guess I was young and stupid at the time. I do enjoy doing what I do for the city and I hope to do many more years. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the city council and Mr. Mayor. And my work really isn't that hard because I enjoy what I do. And being a volunteer, I think everyone that does volunteer realizes you don't want anything in return. When you are a volunteer, that's your reward, is knowing that you can help the other people. So I really truly appreciate this award and thank you so much.
Okay, I'd like to open oral communications for the agency and for the council. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. I want to commend the council on their wisdom in approving one more production as the operators of the Gem Theater. Those of us who were able to attend the ribbon cutting got a chance to walk in and see what they have done to that theater. It is marvelous. It is going to be a great asset to the city. And in coordination with the Gem Theater, the business members of Downtown Main Street in Garden Grove have put together what they are calling "A Taste of Downtown Garden Grove." Now, what this entails, several of the restaurants and businesses are going to be participating. This is on July 27th. It's a Sunday evening. And there are going to be hors d'oeuvres at the various restaurants and businesses. The Performing Arts Studio is going to have their students performing on Main Street for the entertainment of the crowd. And after the opening of the celebration at 7:30, there's going to be a special presentation at the Gem Theater of Seussical the Musical. Now, this is their first production this year, and I hope everyone has a chance to attend. It's going to be a great event. The cost for the tickets is $48. And the details on how to order tickets will be coming out soon in the local newspapers so that you can participate and join us for a great celebration of downtown Garden Grove Main Street and the opening performance of the Gem Theater. Now, their schedule for this year includes six productions. Now, this goes into next year as well. They're going to be doing the Seussical the Musical first, then Big River, which is based on Mark Twain's stories, then Enter the Woods, which is a fantasy dealing with the characters and fairy tales and what happens afterwards. Then there's going to be something to be announced. They haven't come up with that yet. They're going to have Noises Off, which is a delightful comedy. If you haven't seen it, please take an opportunity to go and watch their production. And finally, Bye Bye Birdie. So these are the items that are going to be in production going into next year at the Gem Theater. And I hope this is going to be just the beginning of a great and successful run of the production company at the Gem Theater. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Klaus.
It's terrible to get old. Hi, I'm Mr. Mayor and Council and Fire Chief Berka. Hi, my name is Roger Klaus and I've lived in Garden Grove for 39 years. Over the course of years, Garden Grove's reputation has at times been less than stellar. So it's with great pride that I stand before you tonight. I am here to publicly thank the firemen from Station 7, namely Captain Pat Collins, Engineer Tim Crawford, and Paramedic Steve Erickson. Additionally, the firemen from Station 5, namely Captain Jim Hughes, Engineer Paul Whitaker, Paramedic Jeff Hanna, and Paramedic Tony Acosta. I've written a thank you letter to each and a portion of which I would like to read. Dear firemen, on Saturday, March 8th, 2008, Garden Grove Fire Station 7 was the first responder to a 9/11 call from my house. I was in the process of having a heart attack, which I later found out had the nickname of the Widowmaker. While in the process of establishing my exact medical emergency, it became necessary to call for a second unit. Station 5 answered the call. While not remembering exactly what transpired, I do have two clear recollections. At some point in the assessment of my condition, someone said, "We don't have time for this, let's go." And while being transported to Fountain Valley, the radio conversation is describing my condition. Shortly after entering the ER, I died. I was resuscitated, transferred to the cath lab. I died again, resuscitated again, while being shocked nine times during the process. I had two stents installed in my heart and was comatose for at least a day. I walked out of the hospital on the following Thursday. Follow-up testing on my heart has detected no permanent damage. While there's no substitute for prompt quality emergency care, the whole process starts with the 9/11 call, followed by the firemen's and EMT. In my case, I was fortunate to receive care from a group of people that were thoroughly trained, prompt, efficient, and caring. Your prompt response and diagnosis got me to the hospital in time for the ER staff to save my life. In life, we meet many people that are supposed to be professionals who know what they're doing. This is unfortunately quite often not the case. Garden Grove and Garden Grove Fire can be justly proud of the firemen from Station 5 and 7 for their actions in this life and death experience. I thank you, my wife thanks you, my children thank you, and my grandchildren thank you for starting the process to save my life. I wish you continued success with all the people that you meet in your capacity as a Garden Grove fireman. Again, thank you. Having met Paramedic Jeff Hanna and Paramedic Steve Erickson, to thank them in person and shake their hand, it's come to my attention that a follow-up visit from their former patients happens rarely. This fact is unfortunate since it may be very important for these men to ascertain the final outcome of their effort. I would ask, I gave the chief a letter to be placed in each one of their personnel files for a personal thank you letter signed by me. Further, I would like to thank each publicly for their professionalism and the performance of their duties as a Garden Grove fireman. If these men are any indication of the caliber of firemen employed by the city of Garden Grove, then it is my opinion that the city is in good hands during any life and death emergency. Thank you very much for your time in this matter.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Robin Marcario. You know, while she's coming up here, I think that everybody on the council agrees we do have the finest firefighters in the nation, bar none.
Good evening, council. I'm Robin Marcario. It's nice to see so many people here at the council chambers. I just wanted to, one, thank the council for recognizing some of our volunteers that do give so much to our community. That's how you create a community. And it's really, we are known as a city for our volunteer work, for what we do, and the fact that on the council agenda this evening, you have the renewal for one of the agreements with the Thet Festival, which is one of the four festivals that we have here in Garden Grove. I wholeheartedly support that. They contribute 50% of their proceeds back to the community, and that's to be commended. I also wanted to bring to the attention that I serve as the Chair for the Central Garden Grove Neighborhood Association. And we sponsor, once a year, a community event where we have our elected officials come and give us brief updates of what's happening at the state, county, and the local levels of government. At the state level, Lou Correa has agreed to come. Van Tran will be there, as well as Jose Solario. And from the county level, Janet Nguyen will come and give us an update for county supervisor. And at the local level, here, our council member, Mark Rosen. This is his fifth consecutive year for coming and talking and answering questions about what's going on locally. And we look forward to having you there. And we've invited everyone from the council, so we look forward to seeing you there. It's at 10 o'clock. Let me put up my little sign. Can you see my little sign? It's this Saturday, the 12th, at 10 o'clock in the morning. And it usually just goes for about an hour and a half, and then we have a quick lunch afterwards. So, and the address is 12421 Laurel Lane. And Laurel Lane is located off of Lamson, just east of Magnolia. There'll be lots of signs, so you won't get lost. Everyone's welcome to attend. Bring a friend and a chair, and we'll see you there. Thanks again.
Thank you. Peggy Bergen.
My name is Peggy Bergen, and I'm a 30-year resident of Garden Grove. Basically speaking, I have a couple of odds and ends to talk about, and I will end up with my explanation of my shirt. Last Monday, the Brookers Triangle meeting, not the 4th of July, it was the 30th, 29th through the 30th, there was a meeting of the Brookers Triangle Group explaining different facets of the project. Now, they gave quite a few visualizations of how it could possibly look to get input on what citizens like myself considered to be applicable or acceptable in the city. Some of them are quite nice, and some of them look like the original Star Trek thing taking off. So I didn't really think they would fit too well in the corner. But they also were explaining the traffic situation. And I explained that to them, that that corner was already an F, so they didn't have to do too many traffic studies. But anyways, it was quite an acceptable meeting. I didn't see as many people there as I would have liked. But one of the reasons is kind of because that same morning in the newspaper, we had an announcement in the local section under Garden Grove that we would have no trash pickup on Friday, which was the 4th of July, which I'm assuming. Anyone that's silly enough to think they're going to pick up trash on the 4th of July probably does not read the paper, so they wouldn't know it anyway. But it would have been nice to have any of us that would be interested to go to that meeting to hear. Because there was no set speech. It was just you walked from group to group, so you didn't have to, there was no meeting part to miss. It would have been nice to have more people actually go to one of these community educations on a project in the city. That was number one. So today's paper, though, I was kind of surprised. There's a project that might not be a new youth center going up over in the Buena Clinton area that might be put on hold because of certain factors, which is, that's acceptable. A lot of things are kind of slowing up because of the economy. But my comment is, there was a three-column spread on something that might be voted down, but there was no notice in the paper, once again, of something that was going on that the citizens would like to know about. And my other question is, why do we need another community group, center? I think this one was going to be 2,600 square feet or something on two levels, quite a big project, when we've got a gymnasium over in the Garden Grove Park that does not open till between 3:00 and 5:00 in the afternoons during summer, when our children need the space to play in, but it doesn't open till 3:00 or 5:00 in the afternoons most days. So now, we're going to have another place over there that maybe we can't afford to put staff in or something, but we will have already put in upwards, one estimate was 2,500,000, and the other one was 500, oh, sorry, 5 million. I keep thinking 500,000 is a lot of money, you know. I'm from the old school. But, so therefore, there was even a discrepancy in the article as to what the cost would be. But my question again is, why do we need another space for students? Because when we went to the meeting on planning the gym, there were supposed to be rooms in there, supposedly for meeting rooms, and let's say after-school rooms, and weddings and stuff to take place over there. And when the gym was finally built, there was no other rooms. But I want to also comment that the fireworks this year were not as bad as the last two. That does not mean I did not see some quite wonderful displays from my house. And someone was telling me that they estimated, from what we could see, we probably saw $20,000 worth of fireworks going off, and we weren't looking at Disneyland. We were looking at residences, not only one resident, hopefully. But anyways, they were not quite as bad. So I will thank whoever's been looking out for us for this last year. They weren't quite as disastrously bad. And nothing fell on me from my patio roof, so I guess I should be thankful. And now, finally, I'm wearing this shirt, believe. I just returned last Sunday from Washington, DC, again, for the Mesotheliomyc Symposium, which is an education and a bonding between families like myself that have either been afflicted by the disease or their family members were afflicted and died. So it's quite an uplifting, educational, and depressing four or five days all in a row. But it's mainly educational, and we've been holding it in Washington, DC the last two years so that we can go and speak to our congresspeople and our representatives to try to get them to understand the importance of not putting off voting to ban asbestos, and not only to ban it, but to get funding for research and education. Too many people out there think asbestos has been banned. The original ban that was passed sometime in the early '70s, it was overthrown because of a technicality. Maybe a comma was in the wrong place, who knows? But it was overthrown. So the majority of the people thought it was banned. And at this point in time, from research that's been going on, and not from the symposium, but from other people, there's an estimated over 35 million houses still with asbestos in the walls or in the ceilings, which means when those houses are remodeled, or like in Katrina, those houses were destroyed. They cannot really remediate those areas because they can't afford to come in and have bulldozers and the proper sequence of events. So therefore, it's just very, very important for all of us to know. And if you ever see your congresspeople or anything, please, please remind them, this is not a frivolous vote. This is something that saves lives, takes lives, and is very expensive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peggy. Vu Din Vo.
Good evening, Mayor, members, Mayor Pro Tem Rosen, and members of the city council, residents of the city of Garden Grove, and community members. My name is Vu Din. I am a resident of Garden Grove, and I'm also the internal vice president of the Union of Vietnamese Student Associations. Just to give you a little background about us, we are composed of over 12 different VSA's, student organizations from different colleges and universities all throughout Southern California. We also are composed of over 20 Vietnamese clubs from all of the different high schools all throughout Southern California as well. And we are nonprofit, nonpartisan community organizations founded back in 1982. Our organizational goals include to build unity and solidarity between the Vietnamese-American youths in Southern California, the United States, and the international Vietnamese community. We represent the very diverse and dynamic Vietnamese youth population, and we encourage interaction, participation, and activism in the Vietnamese-American community by promoting awareness of the Vietnamese language, culture, and history. And we also encourage the growth of leadership, service, and civic duty amongst Vietnamese-American youths. One of our largest projects of the year is the Thet Festival held right here in Garden Grove Park. This Lunar New Year marks the beginning of spring and is the most observed holiday within the Vietnamese community. As a means to preserve culture, the Vietnamese-American community celebrates Thet through a vibrant array of traditional foods, ceremonies, and customs. And we at UVSA are proud to have hosted Thet for the past 26 years, since our inception in 1982, and at Garden Grove Park since 2002. in 1982, and at Garden Grove Park since 2002. Attracting over 80,000 patrons annually over the three days, the Thet Festival of Southern California remains the largest festival and the largest Vietnamese cultural event outside of Vietnam. Our staff and members, and over 200 volunteers contribute thousands of hours over several months organizing the festival as a means to strengthen cultural awareness among the youth, to build future leaders for the community, and to fund community programs and projects across the Southern California region. Since we have moved to Garden Grove Park in 2002, we have given back over $806,000 to over 250 different community organizations throughout Orange County and Southern California. We hope to continue that relationship. We have learned and gained a lot working with the City of Garden Grove, with all of the departments and the staff members, for the past five years, and we look forward to continuing that relationship for another five years in service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. You're speaking on behalf, you're speaking on behalf.
Who else?
No. My understanding was you were speaking on behalf of all the other, we have about an over an hour worth of people. I have no problem letting you speak, but my understanding was that you're going to speak on behalf, is that correct?
Well, I'm gonna speak, and me and also my patron, yeah.
One more?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Phong Lee, and I'm the external vice president of the UVSA. First of all, I'd like to personally thank you, Mayor Dalton, Councilmember Rosen, Councilmember Broadwater, for attending our opening ceremony. It was very special to have you attended the event, and we hope to have the full council there this upcoming year. I think it's a very fitting event tonight, as the city honors its outstanding volunteers, because what you have behind me is one of the largest group, or one of the largest collective group of volunteers you have here in Garden Grove. As Mr. Vu Din mentioned, you have more than 200 students, and, you know, many community members, organizations are working on one project that benefits the City of Garden Grove, its residents, and its community organizations. Talking about volunteer, I just want to reemphasize the fact that the entire Thet Festival, one of the largest in the nation and arguably throughout the world, is organized entirely by volunteers, anywhere from the top of the leadership as our chair to our volunteer. Everybody does it with, you know, not getting paid, and sometimes they have to make sacrifices from spending time with family, even during the traditional New Year time, which is traditionally a time for family, but we are out there in the park, building a festival that's gonna truly serve the community. And I want to also let you know that the fact that the festival in Garden Grove, I think, is a very positive thing, and we want to keep it in the City of Garden Grove, because it's an opportunity for us to develop leaders also for the city and for this community. Many of our alumnis and students that have gone through our festival, our program, end up becoming involved in community organizations. They become leaders of the city and of this community. And the work that we do benefit organization from not just the Vietnamese community, but from all community in Garden Grove and throughout Southern California. And we also support city programs, city departments, through our community funding as well. So I'd just like to end by saying that we've been doing a good job for the past five years, and we have enjoyed working with the city in the past, since 2002 at Garden Grove Park, and we would like to continue working with the city. And we also would like to make Garden Grove the best place to live by continuing what we do and continue serving this community. Thank you very much. And lastly, I just want to, I know there's a lot of speakers, and we understand that just gonna be a few of us representing everyone here speaking, but I'd like to introduce our alumni who has been with the organizations for a very, very long time. Just gonna say a few words, and she will conclude the remarks. Thank you, Mayor and council members.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and honorable members of the City Council, and the members of the audience and the residents of Garden Grove. It's my honor to be here today. I'm a Garden Grove High School alum, a proud Argonaut, a graduate from UCLA, as well as the Kennedy School of Government at Harvard University. The reason why I'm here today as an alum and a proud member of the Union of Vietnamese Students Association is that I wanted to share with you a story of how I found UVSA. I remember in high school, when my parents used to take me to the festival. We'd participate in things like the volleyball tournament, the annual festival, the Aoi Pageant, the different opportunities to participate, for seniors to come and get their health care, to get their shots. These are all different things of what UVSA does. And Vu Din had mentioned that some of the money that they donate back into the community. He didn't mention the big figure, that there was a press release that just came out, that UVSA this past year donated $106,000 back into the community. So that's just an example of one of the things that UVSA does in order to give back into this community and to make it thrive, and to make it a great place for our youth and our parents and our seniors to all come together to celebrate not just Vietnamese culture, but as well as what Garden Grove brings to the table as well. So I just wanted to share that experience with the council members and the audience. For those of you who have not yet had the chance to go, I know a lot of you've already been in the parade and have been, had the pleasure of attending the festival, but this is just to share with the rest of the members of the audience, as well as those of you who haven't been able to come, to give you a glimpse of what UVSA means and the great work that they do in this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rod Powell.
I didn't expect to be so fast. My name is Rod Powell, and I'm a citizen of Garden Grove. And I wanted to talk about fireworks again. David, Bill told me that it helps to keep the issue afloat. I feel kind of embarrassed. I have a group home that I operate, and one of the residents of the home asked the manager of the home if he could do fireworks. And the bottom line is, they got a $1,000 fine, which is kind of embarrassing. If they had asked me, I would have told him not to do any fireworks. But, so I guess that the $1,000 fine is happening. You know, it's kind of unfortunate that the guy that had to pay the money was the manager of the house, who was inside watching TV. He didn't even participate. He gave his permission, and so because he gave his permission, he had to pay the fine. My neighbor's mailbox was blown up. You know, I guess that's collateral damage. That happened two nights ago. You could say that has nothing to do with fireworks, but it was one of those plastic drinking bottles that was put in the mailbox, and, you know, it was on the Monday night. I wasn't around on the 4th of July. I was in LA, and I came back about 10-ish, and my neighbors were pretty much through with the fireworks. I only have one neighbor that does fireworks. I don't understand where people think that everyone's doing it. It's such a small amount of people that really do fireworks. You can go down any street in Garden Grove, and I went down quite a few. And on any long street that's got 50 houses, you've got three or four groups of people. It's not everyone, it's not, it's the people who are behind the fun of these fireworks and the family, the tradition and all that. That's not what it is. It's usually just a couple, three of the rowdier houses on the street get together and make a lot of noise, and get one night to be rude to their neighbors, is what it really is. I was, you know, it's hard for me not to be rude about the fact that you guys won't put this on the ballot, as, and I know how personally, I know you and you, you, I don't know, I think you go along with whatever they want, but.
I wish.
I believe that, I believe that, you know, I've read some blogs that you've done on the, and I've read statements that you both have made, and you both feel that it's family fun. You both, I had an article from last year after the, you guys didn't let it go to the ballot, I had an article that I pulled out, and you said that you don't see where this is the issue. You had your own personal feelings about it, but I think the issue that night was not anyone's personal feelings about it. The issue was whether or not we should put it to the vote of the citizens. I think Councilman Broadwater had it correct, and Councilwoman Nguyen had it correct. We should put it to the, I mean, obviously, it's a strongly felt issue by everybody. Why wouldn't we have, why wouldn't we vote on it? That's the part that befuddles me, is it because of the cost? I don't understand why we wouldn't vote on something like that. Truthfully, after that report by the grand jury, you should be talking amongst each other about, on your own, getting rid of this, the fireworks. You know, that's, I'm gonna conclude. I actually made it to the yellow light, so I will conclude. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close oral communications. I'm going to bring.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The young man wants to thank people.
How quick?
Five seconds.
Okay. All right.
Okay, you gotta start timing me. I just want to, real quick, to thank all the supporters that came out tonight to support us, because I.
I tell you what, what are you thinking about when we vote on it? Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, I'm going to pull item 9B forward at this time. 9B, it's the League of Cities issue. Should we close oral communication? Yeah, I did. Do you want to leave it open?
Mr. Merrifield, please, as the council, I believe Maria Stipe has a short staff report.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for approximately the past six years, Garden Grove has not been a member of the League of California Cities, either at the state or local level. The decision to stop the city's membership was made primarily for budgetary reasons. At this time, Garden Grove is the only city in the state that is not a member of the State League, and the only city in Orange County that is not a member of the Orange County Division of the League. Ms. Lacey Kelly, executive director of the League of California Cities, Orange County Division, has requested that Garden Grove consider league and division membership again, and has extended a 50% reduction in dues offered for the first year, which is calendar year 2009. The combined total for the first year for both State League and the Orange County Division would be $30,115. The League of California Cities, Orange County Division presently includes Garden Grove in their publications and benefits, including the Orange County Directory, the Division's website, and New City Profiles magazine. Membership in the League of California Cities would establish a cooperative relationship with the League of California Cities, and would give Garden Grove a voice or the ability to vote in policies and priorities that are set by the league. The value of league membership is highlighted in attachment two of your packet, and that attachment was prepared by the League of California Cities Director of Administrative Services, Dan Harrison. It's recommended that the City Council consider membership in both the State and Orange County Division League of California Cities and direct staff as appropriate. Ms. Lacey Kelly, executive director of the Orange County Division, is present in the audience, and if you would like to address any questions to her, she'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, why don't you come forward? Okay, does anyone have any questions of staff first?
I'd like to correct one thing, Maria. Maria usually gets it right, but we didn't drop out for financial reasons. We dropped out. That might help a little, huh? We dropped out because the six major cities in the county were having a little strike on it, and I don't remember what the issue was, but they all dropped out for a while. We just never went back. The rest of them did.
I believe, I believe you're correct. I believe it was the issue with OCTA.
Voting patterns at OCTA, correct.
Okay, any questions for Lacey?
How you doing, Lacey?
Good, thank you. Good to see you.
You wanna, you wanna make a little pitch first, and then we'll see if there's any questions, and if not, we'll go from there.
Okay, well, as you know, I've tried to meet with all of you except for you, Dina. I think when I was meeting with the council members, you were busy running for a position, but I have tried to discern what would be important for you all in terms of coming back to the league, and we've worked hard to try to rebuild the organization. I think some of the issues that Councilmember Broadwater brought up have been resolved over time. We have a new staff, new board, and we're trying to, and have sort of turned over a new more of a service leaf for our members. And so it's our hope that we can bring in the fold and involve you in defining what more the division will become that can be of service to you all, and that was really all I had to, had to say.
Okay, now, $30,000, that's half, and that's for the state and county or local.
Correct.
And that's for a full year period?
Correct.
From when to when?
January 1 to December 30.
January 1 of.
Well, I'm assuming that you guys would want to come in on the calendar year, so that'd be January 1, 2009.
Okay.
For a full year. But we would continue to treat you just like a member right now.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, any questions?
I have a question.
Miss Broadwater.
What's the minimum amount a city can pay?
Most of the cities in, my understanding is that there aren't any cities paying a discounted rate right now with the State League.
What is the minimum amount any city can pay?
Do you mean a smaller, it's based on population.
And what's the smallest amount a city can pay?
I'm sorry, I don't have those figures with me.
But I mean, isn't there a rock bottom? They can't go lower than a certain amount of money?
I've never explored that particular question. We do have cities that pay more than others based on.
There is a rock bottom, so.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm honestly not aware of it. I haven't explored that, so.
The voting, does the voting, I mean, are they gonna have weighted voting now, or? One of the things that we really were upset with at one time was that the smallest city paid a minimum amount of dues, but had the same voting power as the City of Garden Grove, which sort of diluted the ability, diluted the amount of authority that the individual voter has throughout the city.
Correct. With the division bylaws, they've been changed so that any member can request a population-weighted vote. So it's one city, one vote, unless any one of our members says we'd like to go to population-weighted.
And if they say that, they can go to population-weighted vote?
We are prepared to change the voting on the spot, correct.
When did that change?
Last year.
Thanks. Good things do happen once in a while, huh?
I don't have any questions. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, well, you're prepared to change the voting system, is that without a vote? It's an automatic?
You mean if your voting delegate doesn't come to the meeting, or?
Based on Mr. Broadwater's question, is that without a vote? Is that automatic if someone requested to vote based on population?
Yes, our bylaws state that any member can request that, and then we would redo the vote based on population in each city. We bring those figures with us to every voting meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've been to the League of Cities meetings. I think it's very educational. Some of the things I learned from the League of Cities, I have to go out to the private entities to get, because we don't belong to the league. For that reason, I support us being in the league, because the amount of money that we spend outside of the league, it's probably equally, or maybe more than, what we would spend in the league. And being in the city, being in the league, I also believe that's a benefit to the city when it comes time, when we have issues that we are dealing with statewide and with the federal government. I think it's good to have a concerted body with the same goals and the same interests. For that reason, I support it, and I make a motion to support.
Rejoin?
Yes.
With this, under these conditions?
Yes. Oh, I. Yes. Oh, I...the money part, I kind of agree with Mr. Broadwater. Is there any way we can renegotiate the money?
I can bring that to the respective boards.
Okay.
It's a good deal that they're proposing. They're proposing we pay...
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent for next year, and membership this year basically would be free.
She says this year, she's...well, she's going to bring it to the board, so I have hope, maybe.
They...well, they've discussed this, and if the council is interested in doing that, then they just confirm it. Okay.
I'm going to second her motion for the sake of discussion. Go ahead. I've always wore...I'm not asking questions, I'm talking about it, but I always thought of it sort of a badge of honor to be one city out of 500 cities that didn't belong, you know? But if they've changed that vote, I would always said that we would...I'd go back if they changed it. So I think that's an improvement. I think that warrants taking another look at it. So I'm going to vote yes.
I'm going to support the motion. You know, I remember when we were in the league, there was a different executive director, and I recall that Councilman Broadwater and Councilman Dalton and I went to a league meeting, and they had...their guest speaker was somebody who was reading poetry, and after that, we said, "We don't need this," you know? So we dropped out. And I think Lacy has taken a totally different attitude as executive director. I think it's much more serious, and they focus on issues that are really pertinent to cities. I think the meeting this Thursday is about transportation, and one project in particular directly affects our city. We talk about housing needs all the time, and there's something called the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which is done on a regional basis, and we don't have any influence over that because we're not in the League of Cities, and I think we need to have a say-so on that. There's a whole bunch of other areas where we need to say so. And I see that because I'm on the OCTA Board, Orange County Transportation Authority Board, where we deal with regional issues all the time, and so I hear about things that we wouldn't hear about otherwise. And I think it's important for us to participate in that and have some influence on that. We miss that on being on committees. In fact, we not only dropped out of the league because of the poetry meeting, but also...we had two members on the council at the time that were running against each other for the state assembly, and they got into this game. You missed meeting...you missed league meetings on the committee you were on. Well, no, you missed more meetings, and so in order to outdo each other, they decided we ought to drop out of the league. And so we don't have that going on anymore, and so I think we ought to join and participate fully in the league.
Go ahead if you want to say.
One time, we had dropped out of the League of Cities. We dropped out twice, not one time, so...and we dropped out of the League of Cities, and so Mark Lees and I went over there for some...something that had to deal with it, and they wouldn't feed us. They wouldn't let us eat. And so we went out and bought a big bag of Taco Bell, brought it back, and set it down and ate it in front of them, so...but sometimes it can be fun.
Well, you know, I think that...I know you've worked very hard to get this city back in, extremely hard. In fact, you're almost a pest at a couple of times, which is good. Which is good, because, you know, you showed with your perseverance that there...people are willing to change their mind once they hear the whole picture. And I didn't mean that, you know, negatively or sarcastically. Actually, I meant it positively. And in the past, we have...there were times when it was a political thing, times when, just as was said prior, that we felt that things weren't being run properly there, and that is a fact, because that's with the complete change that's been done over there, that showed why it was done. And I'm a sucker for a bargain, but don't write that check till next year if we're getting this free...but our free six months. No, I'm going to support it. I think it's about time. And you know, realistically, we could always drop back out if we're not happy.
Three times.
That's absolutely right.
So it's up to you to make sure we're kept happy, and we win some of these posts and assignments and everything, okay?
It's my job.
Okay, any other comments?
The only thing I'd like to add is just, I'm excited to see that we are looking like we're heading back towards joining up again. I think it makes sense. And the only thing I'd like to add is just that I think it's one of these groups that you get out of it what you put into it, so I hope we actually do get actively involved, because aside from the issues and everything else that are discussed there, it's just, in a more general sense, it's a networking opportunity to mix and mingle with other cities and learn from each other, and, you know, and that can really help our city as well, so...
Okay, call for the vote.
The lights didn't go on.
Uh-oh, sabotage.
Maybe try again, maybe?
Everybody try again.
Gus was fooling around with us today.
I just didn't go on either.
They worked earlier this afternoon.
We can do a voice.
Okay. Do you want me to call names?
You bet.
Councilmember Broadwater?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosen?
Yes.
Mayor Dalton?
Yes.
Can I say something?
Sure.
That's it.
Welcome back. Thank you. I'm really glad to have you back, so I'm going to be more of a pest now, because I want to involve you, so thank you.
You've done something two or three other people couldn't have done.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
That's what I meant about perseverance. It worked. Thank you. Okay. I'm going back to oral communication. What?
I closed oral communications. However, there was a card being filled out at the time, and so I'm going to honor that, and this will be the last one, though, because I didn't send anybody else writing while I was talking. Nick La Kong.
Mr. Mayor, a member of the council. My name is Nick La Kong. I'm the citizen of Garden Grove, and I am the former planning commissioner for this great city two years ago. I come here to express my full support for your decision to renew the contract for the student unions. I believe that in the past five years, they have demonstrated the excellent performance in organizing the Tet Festival in our community, and I don't think any other organization could do better than them. This is one of the great events in our community, and I am very proud of them, and then I urge all of you to unanimously to renew the contract for the union students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close oral communication, recess the council, and go to the agency.
The agency had a closed session item, and that's all we have this time.
4B be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or actions requested by a councilman.
I'll pull 4B.
Yes, I'd like to pull 4B, the agreement with the union of Vietnamese students.
Is that the one you want to pull?
Yeah, that's the one I pulled. I'll move the balance.
Second.
Okay, her motion is second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Broadwater?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosen?
Yes.
Mayor Dalton?
Yes. Wait a minute, we pulled yours. We haven't voted yet. Okay. With the latecomer, Mr. Nick La Kong that came here, you know, we kind of heard from everybody, and it's unanimous as far as I'm concerned. I mean, the people that are on the council now, that were on the council a few years ago when we had others, it just wasn't quite the same. I think you have worked very diligently. You've refined a process that's acceptable for everyone. You have...you pay your own way. I mean, every bit of everything that is provided for the Tet Festival is paid for by this group here. They ensure that, whether it's police help, whatever it is, it is paid for, which is one wonderful thing that you can say for a community when you don't have items such as this that you love but are very costly. I think you've proven that this group can do it, has done it, and will be able to do it in the future. And I think you did a great job. I think that you're going to continue to do a great job. And if you asked me one thing I would like to see a little bit different is, I'm a little selfish towards the city of Garden Grove. I'd like to see a little more of the donations go to nonprofits in the city of Garden Grove. But other than that, well, actually, not even discussing that, you still do a great job. But just keep in mind what I said, and I'm certainly...I'm certainly going to support this, and I make a motion that we do.
Second.
Yes. There's a reason that I pulled this item from the calendar, and that is I want to make sure that the student union and their volunteers...a lot of volunteers are not the students, and they put in a lot of work and assistance to the student union. I want to make sure that these people are congratulated for the exceptional job that they have done for the Vietnamese community and for the city of Garden Grove, the nonprofit organizations. I had the same concern as the mayor. I did check the list. They give to eight non...I think about eight nonprofit Garden Grove organizations or more. I counted them. I thought there were a lot. So, Mr. Mayor, I think they have covered that area. Not only did they give such a pleasant experience of the Vietnamese beautiful culture to the residents of Garden Grove in Orange County, but they also showed exemplary contribution to the community through their grants of $800,000 to local nonprofits organizations such as the Garden Grove Foundation, the Hope House, and the Boys and Girls Club. And I'd like to mention that, again, $800,000, that's a lot of money over the past five years for a very young group. These young people should be commended for a wonderful job for dedicating the time and love to this community. It's with great pride that I announce my support for the UVSA. They are the pride of the Vietnamese community because they care and because they are role models for the first generation. Make no mistake when I say that I support this UVSA, that I do support the continuation of the Tet Parade. I know there are a lot of talks out there regarding some of the questions I may have. Those questions are very technical, and I'd like to know about them because of the many organizations that we have in Garden Grove. But other than that, what I have for this UVSA is full support for the Tet Festival, as well as all the activities that they do that are nonpartisan and that supports the community. Thank you very much.
Call for the vote. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I agree with Councilwoman Nguyen. Since the students took over the festival, it's been a wonderful experience. They do all the work, and they deserve all the money, and they deserve to spend it the way they want to spend it. I just want to say that I received a telephone call this morning from State Senator Lou Correa, who is totally in support of the students for the Tet Festival. There's actually a representative from Congresswoman Sanchez's office in the room. I presume she's in support of the Tet Festival. When Mr. La Kong spoke, he was speaking as a private citizen, but he works for Supervisor Janet Nguyen. I presume she's in support of the students and the Tet Festival, so it's almost unanimous. And so I'm happy to support the contract extension.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, just one quick comment in support of the student union as well. You know, they give away $106,000, and it goes to, I think, 96 different groups. That means they're spreading that money all over to a bunch of different nonprofit groups that probably really need it a lot right now in times of just tough economic times and times of budget cuts. So I think it's great. The event itself is very well organized for that many people to come together in one spot on, you know, one time period, and so it's very well-run. The money is donated out to a number of different groups around town, and then I read, and I don't know if this is true or not, but I read that in addition to the money that they're required to give out, that they're looking to give something like $30,000 to support the Vietnam Library as well, which I think is a...which is above and beyond kind of what they were conditioned or required to do. And I would love to see that project come about. I think that just makes a lot of sense generationally for the Vietnamese community to memorialize their history so that the younger generations can appreciate where their parents and grandparents came from. I think that's a very big deal in town, so...
Okay, I'm going to call for the vote, and then pending the vote, if you want to applaud after that, you can. Okay, please call.
Councilmember Broadwater?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosen?
Yes.
Mayor Dalton?
Yes. We're going to take a five-minute break.
We missed oral communications, so I'll open oral communications for this card only. Deborah Von Trapp.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council, Chief Burka, and Chief Polazar. I am a daughter of Garden Grove. I grew up here, went to high school here, worked here while I worked my way through college, and I was one of the first women in the United States to have a bachelor's degree in criminology. My internship was at the Garden Grove Police Department. So it is with great disappointment today that I come to the council after many contacts with the department to ask the council's assistants in oversight of a situation that has come to a head after almost 90 days in trying to both correct a false police report that was filed, which potentially involved medical fraud by a police officer on your force, and also in terms of what occurred with me while I was in the city, which I will just briefly state. I was at Costco, drove into an Arco station, laid down my Visa debit card, was told by an Arab gentleman that my card was not good at his station. That was at 13331 Euclid Avenue in Garden Grove, and so I then said I would go out to my car and get cash. In August, I turned 57. I am fully disabled, and therefore, it was an effort for me, without taking anything out of my car, to get from my car to that location to even reach him. But I did it. I went out to the car and only had $10 cash on me, and took it back to...into him, to the counter, went out, pumped the gas, and very quickly walked around my car, washed my back window, my left window, and when I got to my driver's front window, found myself in the position of having this Arab person, apparently 19 years old and the son of the owners, come grab the item from me and run away. Fortunately, a verifiable witness, a woman in her Disneyland uniform, was on the other side of the pump. She said, "What was that?" I said, "I don't know, but I can't drive with my window wet." I went to the other side of the station, got another windshield wiper, and then went over and finished wiping my window. My door was shut. My disabled sticker was in full view because I had not removed it since I left Costco, because if you drive into a gas station in the state of California and more than two people are on duty, one can be asked to pump your gas, and that would have been helpful for me at that time. This person, I realized as I was washing the other window or just taking the water off of it, came rushing at me. off of it, came rushing at me, not, not attempting to take the windshield wiper away from me, but grabbed my right arm, my right hand, crushed it, and started pushing me to the ground as I was attempting to protect myself and screaming that I was disabled and my sign was displayed. What is most troubling about those circumstances is that it was broad daylight, that there were witnesses that were verifiable, and that the police response is totally incontrovert, it controverts the circumstances that took place. The fire department responded, and I have to say, the fire department response was outstanding. They were highly concerned for me. My lower blood pressure was over 100, which, because I'm disabled, put me in a life-threatening situation. I, two police officers, two police cars responded, and I asked to either have the car removed by AAA because I needed to go to the hospital. I asked to have the officer escort me if he wasn't going to let me do that, because he said he wasn't going to. And I asked that the officer move the car to Costco because I was a member, and I could have had it, then, my car could have been protected. But what concerns me the most here is that a police officer in this city lay, left me no choice but to get in my car in my condition and endanger myself and others to get to the hospital. And when I got in the front door of the hospital, I fainted, and they picked me up. They took me to the emergency.
You have run out of time, but I will have someone contact you, and we'll, we'll look into this matter.
But, okay.
Okay?
But I, I, I thank you for your time, but I, my largest concern is that your officers had no concern.
Okay, this, this, this is not the forum. And I, I will have someone contact you, and you can discuss everything, and I will personally...
I, I realize IA is a forum to do that.
Mm-hmm.
But since they've held up my ability to be assisted by an insurance company.
I will have someone contact you, thank you very much.
I, I can't understand why.
Okay, I'm closing oral communications.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, 7A is an update from our police chief and our fire chief regarding the events of the Fourth of July.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you well know, based on the ordinance, the municipal code that was passed last year that allowed us to issue administrative citations for the use of illegal fireworks, we had one year under our belt, which was last year. Last year's Fourth of July occurred on a Wednesday night, and going into this Fourth of July, we had some concern that the level of activity might be a little more because it fell on a Friday night. I'm happy to report to you that that is not the case. We have some brief preliminary figures that I'd like to share with you. In 2007, last July 4th, we answered a total of about 192 fireworks-related calls for service. This year, we had 155 fireworks-related calls. That's just about a 20% decrease in calls for service, for fireworks calls. The level of citations dropped more than that. Again, we fielded the same complement of people as we did last year, anticipating a higher level. In 2007, we issued 151 administrative citations. This year, we only issued 67, and that's about a 55% decrease. Anecdotally, our overall observation was that there was a dramatic reduction in the use of illegal fireworks. However, there was the usual use of Safe and Sane fireworks. Of the 67 citations that we issued this year, 14 were infractions, carrying only a $100 fine. 53 were for the new municipal code, which carries a $1,000 fine. Of those 67 citations, 29 were written to Garden Grove residents, and the remaining 38 citations were to people not residing in the city of Garden Grove. And those are the preliminary statistics that the police department has at this time. A more detailed report will be forthcoming within the month.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members... Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have worked the last five Fourth of Julies, and there was a noticeable decrease in the amount of activity of illegal fireworks from my perspective. As I drove around the city, we covered every district over the night, and there was a substantial decrease in the amount. I got a lot of positive comments about the public awareness campaign that took place this year, the reverse 911 calls, the bus stops, water flyers, cable TV, the banners. So, there seemed to be an awareness that wasn't there in previous years. We did confiscate last year 324 pounds of illegal fireworks, and this year, with the reduced amount of citations, we still confiscated 304 pounds of illegal fireworks. We did that with the help of our CERT team members at four of our fire stations and our police cadets that processed that and put it through as evidence. And through June 30th to July 5th, which is our reporting period for fireworks, this year, we only had five dumpster fires and four bush or tree fires. The overall sales for Safe and Sane fireworks aren't done yet completely compiled, but overall, this amount of sales for Safe and Sane were down in Garden Grove and across the area, across Orange County. So, I would say that our efforts here in Garden Grove seemed to pay off with a decrease in the amount of illegal activity.
Thank you. I know that several of the council members rode that night along. I rode with two police officers, and I can tell you that I was really proud, not only to be the mayor, but being a former Garden Grove police officer myself. The police and the firefighters, everybody handled themselves extremely well. I mean, I heard some of the officers called names I haven't heard for many years, and they didn't react. They did their job, they did it professionally. The firefighters, exactly the same. They did everything that they needed to do professionally, and they talked to children out there that, that actually were setting off Safe and Sane fireworks and very positive contacts. It just wasn't the negative writing a citation. There were a lot of positive contacts. And I'll tell you, when you go around the corner where people are using the Safe and Sane fireworks and they're cheering the police and fire that is driving, that are driving around the corner, you know, it really makes you feel good. They're happy, they want us there. There are so many people that don't want the illegal fireworks. You know, I call them, we call the Safe and Sane, well, I call them the unsafe and insane fireworks, and those are the ones that have created the problems in the past. But there's no doubt that the campaign that was put on by the fire department and the police department and several of us being involved in it, it certainly had an impact. I don't think there was one person that was in the city limits that night that didn't know that it was a $1,000 fine. The campaign was really run well, signs were everywhere, and it showed a definite impact. I was primarily out in the west end of Garden Grove, and I'll tell you, it was like night and day. Last year, I, I probably would go along with some of the people saying that you, you saw something going off every few seconds. This year, it was totally different. It was a big difference. And I'm, I think that, you know, if we do the same thing next year, I think it's going to be less. I think the number of citations are going to go down. But I think the number of families that have a good time with Safe and Sane fireworks are going to increase. And we did not have any houses burned this year. We had no injuries that we're aware of. But I can assure you that if fires occur and the injuries occur, the chances are that it's the unsafe and insane fireworks. I want to personally thank the fire chief, Chief Burka, and the police chief, Chief Polizar, for doing an outstanding job and for their departments representing this city so well. Thank you very much. Okay. Yes, go ahead, I'm sure.
I have a few comments. I went on a ride-along on the eastern part of the city, and it was noticeably down. I'd be curious to know whether the sale of legal fireworks was down. Do you know?
It, it was. They'll have the num, the exact numbers by Thursday, but we called one of the larger firework TNT, and they just told us that overall sales were down across the state and in Orange County and in Garden Grove.
Okay, that might be a reflection on the economic times that we're in. But, you know, you live and you learn, and I try not to let any prior beliefs shade the facts, and the facts are here, that we instituted a fine that is certainly overwhelming to people who might want to otherwise use illegal fireworks, and it had a big impact. And, and you know, that may carry over into other areas of discipline, that if you have strong discipline, that reduces the illegal behavior. And our cops were great, the two that I went out with. I've already written to you about them. They were wonderful, they were controlled. We were in an unmarked police car, and we drove past one house, and the resident threw a firecracker under the car. And so, naturally, we stopped, and he got a ticket, but they were controlled. And so, I'm proud of our officers. A couple of comments I heard or that I observed is, some of the officers who worked the west side said that there were, it was difficult to maneuver around on the west side because of the number of block parties, and that the block part, there were so many block parties that it prevented the officers from effectively moving around. That's something we need to give some thought to next year, is should we set a limit on block parties? Where the block parties result in clogging the transportation lines? The officers that I was with issued four citations altogether, and after two, they went to the fire station to fill out their reports, and then after the next two, they went to the fire station. And they had to write these reports in hand, and it seemed, it took an awful lot of time where they were off the streets and writing these reports. And I would think there's some way to streamline that. I know that under ordinary circumstances, they can dictate the reports, or there are people who write the reports for them. It just, if there's some way to streamline that on the Fourth, we should look at that. And then, a lot of people, not a lot of people, but occasionally, we would come to a four-way intersection, and people were setting off legal fireworks in the middle of a four-way intersection, which blocks the intersection, and we should give some thought about that. But overall, I think our program was highly successful, and next year, I think the Fourth is on a Saturday, and so, I think we should repeat what we did this year. And, and let me just address one more thing, and that is with regard to why don't we put fireworks on the ballot? You just, you don't put every controversy on the ballot. And six people, the same six people, getting up and complaining 100 times about fireworks is not the same thing as 600 people getting up and complaining about fireworks. And we're just not in the practice of putting things on the ballot because six people get up and complain. And I have not seen the overwhelming cry from the citizenry to ban fireworks, just the opposite. We, as Bill said, we saw lots of, of people celebrating with legal fireworks, families out together, celebrating the Fourth of July. I'm proud that we have a city that allows that kind of individual celebration, and I certainly don't want to see that done away with. So, good job.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Broadwater.
Basically, basically, they, I toured the parks July the Fourth. You keep shutting my mic down.
Take a vote on that.
Put it on the ballot.
Anyway, I've been sabotaged again. But the parks, I don't know whose idea was to shut them down, but it was a brilliant idea, because the past, I've ridden always with the fire department, and we'd go through the parks, and then everybody and their neighbors would be coming, they were looking for a place to set them off, especially people from out of town. And it was hard, very hard to control. But this year, the police department, there was out in force, the big parks had a policeman there all night, the smaller parks were closed down, it was closed down. I think that out of the 12 parks that we went through, one park had some fireworks, and that was dispensed immediately. I think that turning on the water, it's a great idea. Turning the lights on, it's a great idea, and it worked well. I think part of the sales might be down because of Arnold, you know, the governor getting on and saying, "Please don't buy fireworks." So, I think that probably had an effect statewide.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I just want to thank our fire chief, Dave Burka, for allowing me to go out and do a ride-along with our fire crew. Certainly, from the fire department's perspective, the illegal activity was down dramatically this year compared to last year. I mean, it was visibly to me, too, but just to hear, hear it from the guys who were the feet on the street. And to get out there down it, I mean, there was a, I saw a lot of people, a lot of families really coming together and having a good time and enjoying their Independence Day together. And my only thing I'd like to add to it, and maybe this goes nowhere, but maybe this becomes part of our campaign in the future, is to augment our program with a July 5th enforcement of people cleaning up after themselves. Fireworks create a lot of litter, and that's something that bothers me, because a lot of that ends up down in our storm drains and whatnot. We're just littered over the street, and then, you know, the Public Works has to go clean up after people or whatnot. So, it'd be nice if people just had, were kind of urged to be responsible and clean up after themselves as well.
I just have a question. Did we use more manpower this year than last year or the same?
The same.
Okay. Just want to congratulate the fire department and the police department for a job well done. From where my house is, I didn't see, this year, I didn't see any illegal fireworks where my house is, and I think that's, a lot of it has to do with our new code and the police and the fire department being out there, making sure everybody's doing safe and sane firework. Unfortunately, I wanted to do a ride-along, but I had to supervise my children and spend time with them since they're younger. But hopefully, in a few years, I'll get a ride-along. Thank you for doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ordinances for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, you have ordinance number 2729, an ordinance of the City Council of City Garden Grove, establishing the amount of money for paramedic services that must be raised by an ad ver lorem tax override and the setting of the tax rate.
Move approval?
Second. Okay, mushed second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Broadwater?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosen?
Yes.
Mayor Dalton?
Yes.
Okay, 9A.
Yeah, Les, Les Jones is available to brief the council on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fatale. At the request of Mayor Dalton, this item is on the agenda. In 2000, the county of Orange completed flood control projects, which included the construction of Seven Oaks Dam, and improvements to the Prado Dam, and improvements to the Santa Ana River. Totalling $1.3 billion, these improvements were specifically designed to mitigate the threat flood, excuse me, the flood threat in Southern California, particularly in Orange County, which was identified as the greatest flood threat west of the Mississippi. Consequently, many of the Orange County homeowners were relieved from the burden to purchase flood insurance for their homes. Subsequently and unfortunately, due to the Hurricane Katrina and the effects of the flooding in New Orleans, the National Flood Insurance Fund has become extremely financially challenged and has given cause for the following bill, HR 3121, to be introduced in 2007, known as the Flood Insurance Reform and Modernization Act of 2007. Both the Senate and the House versions have passed their respective bodies and are proceeding to conference committee for finalization. Once done, this will be presented to the President for consideration. Now, in its amended form, HR 3121 proposes to mandate that federal flood maps be redrawn and all areas protected by a dam or a levee be included in the floodplain again. The result of this will mean that all of the residents of Garden Grove effectively, if they have a mortgage, will be required to have flood insurance. In addition, lenders will be required to require the flood insurance, and if they do... don't, they're subject to fines of up to $2,000 per violation or $1 million per year in fines. Today, the city received a letter from the City of Fountain Valley, which has taken a position as of today, up in opposition to HR 3121. Staff is also aware that the County Board of Supervisors is considering this matter also for potential opposition. Unfortunately, if passed, HR 3121 will negate the $1.3 billion that's been expended by the county to alleviate the requirements for flood insurance in most of Orange County, and hence, most homeowners in Orange County will have to purchase flood insurance. Presently, the City Council's legislative platform does not contain a position regarding this matter. So the City Council may elect to give staff direction in regards to the matter, and staff will follow up. That concludes my report. I hope to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for staff?
I'd like to see us draft a letter in opposition. I, I don't think that every resident of the city of Garden Grove should have to pay for something when they're not even, areas are not even in a flood zone. And I'd certainly like to register a protest.
I'll second that. I actually was involved in flood insurance for a number of years when I was an insurance salesman, and people were forced to buy it in places that were never going to be a flood. In fact, the part of Garden Grove that we saw flooded in the last 15 years was seven miles from the part that they were forcing you to buy the flood insurance in. And so it really didn't work well at all. I think that their maps are faulty, and I think it's been proven a number of times. I hope that if it does pass, everybody pays off their house so they don't have to buy it, and that would be a good thing. But I certainly will second the motion.
Okay, is the motion a second?
I, I also want to see if the lobbyists that we hired could come up with something against that. If we talk to them about it?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Can we please talk to them and, and see from what, what we could do state, at the state level or the federal level, how can we lobby against that? And if, if we could also tie in, is this tied in with the League of Cities?
The League of Cities has not taken a position on this as it is federal legislation.
Well, then we should drop out.
But they, they're affected by this, aren't they?
We'll contact our lobbyists.
Okay, is, I thought, maybe we can ask the League of City, what's the position? Because aren't the other cities affected by this too? Okay, all right.
We're basically being asked to subsidize areas which are in flood control areas, and this is basically a gimmick to fund the flood insurance program by reaching out to people who are not endangered by it, which is unfair. And it's interesting watching the news programs this year about flooding along the Mississippi, along the Mississippi River, and those areas that maintain levees, strong levees are not flooded, and those areas that didn't are getting flooded, and I'm just not sure we ought to be subsidizing those people. I remember the last time it flooded along the Mississippi was about 15 years ago, and our family took a, happened to be taking a vacation across the country, and we drove into a lot of those areas. And I remember one place, we stopped in Davenport, Iowa, on the Mississippi River, and Iowa's on one side, and Illinois is on the other side, and on the Illinois side of the river, they had built levees, and they were not flooded, but Davenport had been totally flooded, and their baseball stadium had been underwater, and, you know, apparently, some areas haven't learned, but I don't think we ought to be penalized for that.
Okay, have a motion a second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Broadwater?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Wynn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosen?
Yes.
Mayor Dalton?
Yes. Okay, let's see where it matters, Mr. Broadwater?
I have nothing to say to you.
Mr. Rosen?
Nothing.
Mr. Wynn?
Oh, yes, I just want to say, I, last weekend, I, I went to an event. It was the reunion of the Vietnamese-American vets and American vets, veterans, Vietnam War veterans, and they had a big reunion of about almost 600 people. And during the reunion, there was one commander at the time, but now he is more like a general. He met his counterpart after 30 or 40 years, he thought this person had died already, but they were, he was alive, and they were very happy. Everybody were very positive and expressed camaraderie and how they've worked very well together. And I, I wanted to congratulate the group on make, on organizing this meeting, because it was very important for the veterans to see other people in the same position and who feels and thinks the same as them, as the, as former soldiers, Vietnamese soldiers or American soldiers. They've dedicated their time, lives, and, and a lot more for just the fight of freedom, and that means a lot. No matter what war you're in, no matter what situation you're in, when you sacrifice your life for freedom, that's a very honorable thing, and I want to thank those people for bringing all the soldiers together. Another event I, I want to mention is the Living in America event that was about a week ago, and that's when they, the Bitbao and the Lyric Saigon TV, they have a contest for Vietnamese-Americans telling about their lives in America, what it means, and how much thanks they give to America for giving them a second chance to live in a free country and be productive, and for their children to grow and become very productive people. And this contest is on every single year, and every year, they have about a dozen of winners, and I want to congratulate the winners. It, it takes a lot of time to put together these writings, but I think these people take out the time because they're very appreciative of the lives they have right now. I want to share that with other people who aren't Vietnamese-Americans, that, just to let them know that Vietnamese-Americans are very thankful and grateful that they're here in America.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I don't have anything.
Okay, I don't either, so we will adjourn the council meeting until Tuesday, July 22nd.